Good evening. Welcome to the special. Sorry. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, June 2nd. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmembers Fierko, Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here.
We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Tonight's special session has one agenda item, Historic Policy Update: Effort and Preservation Ordinance. We'll have a presentation from Zachary Dahl. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, we'll go ahead and pull up our presentation. All right. Good evening. I'm Zach Dahl, Director for the Community Development Department. I'm joined here this evening with Julianne Murphy, Architectural Historian with Ringcon Consulting, and Sun Kwan, Deputy Director for Community Development. I want to acknowledge our project team. We also have some of our other members online remotely to support our discussion here this evening. So as we get started with this discussion to provide an update of where we're at, I do want to just highlight, as background, this effort is being driven by policies and actions in our recently adopted General Plan 2040, and this work is seeking to implement two of those actions, specifically CD 5.8 and 5.9. But for tonight's discussion, we will focus on the Historic Preservation Ordinance and options for moving forward. I also do want to highlight our project progress. This was the timeline that was included when this effort was originally approved back in January, and then the contract was executed in February. So we are still in the early stages, but we are staying on track with the goal of bringing back a final product for council review and adoption beginning of 2026. All right, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Julianne Murphy, who can walk us through where we're at and the discussion points that we're bringing forward this evening.
Thanks, Zach. Can you, is this okay? As part of our work under Task 3, Community Outreach and Engagement, we finalized our Outreach and Engagement Plan, which is available on the city's website and was also attached to tonight's materials. And we have planned and designed opportunities for community input through several planned focus groups, workshops, and online resources. And our engagement strategy has been designed to have opportunities for multiple types of engagement to ensure that we're reaching the most amount of people possible. We plan to kick off our first activities following tonight's study session, so community outreach will begin in earnest this month. As a reminder, we have also begun work on Tasks 2 and 4, which in addition to including the ordinance work, includes the development of a historic context statement. We have begun doing our historic context research, which includes archival and background research. I just want to remind that And just want to remind that the purpose of a historic context statement is to provide a framework and is, highlights trends and patterns for development and it does not evaluate individual or groups of properties, result in changes to the status of existing historic resources in the city, or include an in-depth survey effort. So the purpose of tonight's study session, we're again focusing on the Historic Preservation Ordinance. I'm going to begin by providing a background and understanding of the current status of the city's ordinance, highlight some key issues and opportunities for improving the preservation ordinance, provide some different approaches to establishing owner consent and local district designation for you to consider, and ask for City Council direction on historic preservation ordinance updates, including the type of owner consent you wish to include in the ordinance update and how you want to design historic district designation, if at all. I also want to point out that we're here to receive direction and feedback from council and get parameters for our next steps in our work before we begin our community outreach process. So some background on the history of preservation in San Mateo. The city's been engaged in historic preservation efforts in some way since 1974, including the adoption of the Environmental Resources Management Element Plan, which did include a recommendation for historic preservation ordinance that the city did not end up adopting at that time. The first major effort that the city undertook was the 1989 survey, which I want to point out predates California establishing the California Historical, the California Register of Historical Resources, which didn't become enacted until 1992. So some of the ID efforts in that 1989 work are tied to the National Register. Just want to kind of point out timeline for a point of reference. 1993 was the big year for the city. You established your historic preservation ordinance, your downtown district, and your Mills Act program. Since that time, the city has done ordinance updates in 1995, 2010, and 2022. And most of those updates have been pretty minor, have included some language revisions, things of that sort, and have mostly been associated with general plan updates that were happening around the same time. In 2024, the city updated the general plan and included approaching historic preservation holistically as one of their big ideas. And before we kind of get into the rest of the big presentation, I would like to revisit the idea of visiting his, or I'm sorry, addressing historic preservation holistically. Most of the images that I'm going to be using on tonight's slide are from postcards of San Mateo, mostly from the Golden Age of postcards that date from about 1900 on. At the time, they were popular collectibles, but they also chronicled places. These postcards were sent to people to say, hey, this is San Mateo, I'm here, wish you were here too. And so I think you'll recognize a lot of the places that are included in these images. Several are of downtown, which has been protected by its status as a local historic district. Others have endured without any protections and still more have been lost. But I think it nicely illustrates that San Mateo has both a tolerance for change while being proud to celebrate its past. The goal of preservation is not to freeze the city in one period or moment, to provide a reference for continuity and reflect on the collective and shared history of the city. In its endeavor to be pro-history, pro-managing change, it's often interpreted as being anti-change and anti-growth and anti-housing, but it is most successful when it coexists with the present. Preserved historic places provide tangible pieces of history that only really gain value when you understand them as they survive along the new. So in that respect, historic preservation is very consistent with the idea of development and with the city's big idea to find the right balance between preservation and other important priorities such as providing new homes. Some, another I think important feature to understand about historic preservation, historic preservation law, it really happens in two regulatory environments. One being local review, which is going to be the focus of tonight in tonight's presentation. And that includes preservation ordinances that allow for designation oversight of the treatment of historic resources, including local designation and activities like permit review. And then there's also the California Environmental Quality Act, which the city has a responsibility to fulfill. It is a state mandated environmental review process that generally includes three steps, which if there is a project under CEQA, you have to identify, do you have a historical resource? Would the project cause a substantial adverse change in the significance of a historical resource? And if it were, can the impact be avoided or mitigated? So just want to kind of bring up early on that we have two regulatory environments that we have to be aware of while we talk about these issues. Some more historic preservation basics. Preservation ordinances are an essential element for a successful historic preservation program. They provide a level of certainty and consistency, foster compatible economic development while celebrating the community's historic and cultural values, enhance local preservation values, provide guidance for future impacts to historic resources, and inform the planning and design of future developments. Some common pitfalls in preservation ordinances include they are too detailed, that they become ineffective. They're so ambitious that they can't be supported by staff, or they are so rigid that any change becomes difficult. So the first thing we did to inform our study was to review the city's existing ordinances as well as related materials like the 1989 survey report, general plan sections, and application materials and instructions from the city's planning department to get a sense of how the program is working. We reviewed the city's existing ordinance against the common pitfalls for historic preservation ordinances and found that in some instances, it is too rigid, some aspects were too detailed, and it is mostly missing some common features of historic preservation ordinances. And that is the purpose of this visual here. As you can see, the city has some elements in common preservation ordinances, but is missing many more. Some of the other issues that we identified as part of our study is that there are some aspects of the ordinance that are too detailed. Section 276610, which states the ordinance's purpose, has language like, "The city will be enhanced by respecting the heritage of its historic resources" and the historic downtown district, which is just unnecessary to repeat the historic district when you've already said the historic resources. Then some sections become inconsistent. For example, in Section A1 of that section, it states that one of the purposes of the chapters is to designate the city's historic structures, but then the chapter does not provide an effective mechanism to make designations because the city does not have an evaluative criteria for local designation. There is inconsistency in the next section, which includes two sets of definitions for individually eligible and contributor buildings. And then some of the rigidity that we see in the ordinance is due in fact that it's based a lot on that work of that 1989 survey. And since that time, the ordinance has been tweaked here and there, but it still uses a lot of that 1989 language. These features make the ordinance hard to use for everyone. And that can lead to people to think that this ordinance is difficult, preservation is arbitrary, and the system is unfair. And so hopefully, the outcome of this work is to provide an ordinance that is clearer and more user-friendly for everybody. To get a sense of the best practices in the state and what they're doing in their historic preservation ordinances, we reviewed ordinances for all cities in San Mateo County, adjacent cities in other counties, and cities throughout the state with similar developmental trends and population sizes. We additionally looked at prevailing guidance documents from the Office of Historic Preservation, the California Preservation Foundation, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and the legal precedents. So as you'll see here, we looked at 36 cities throughout California, 11 counties are represented, and we generally looked at communities that had a population similar to San Mateo at about 100,000. We focused our analysis on five issue areas. These were identified based both on council direction that we received in the January meeting and the things that emerged as key topics during our ordinance research. They include designation criteria, reviewing bodies, historic districts, owner consent, effects of designation, and we also provided recommendations as well as several issues for council to consider in deciding next steps. So in San Mateo County, only 40%, 47% of cities have historic preservation ordinances. However, when we pulled out to the rest of the cities that we looked at, about 61% of the, not about, exactly, 61% of the cities, study cities that we looked at have historic preservation ordinances. One of the basic features of a historic preservation ordinance is to have a way to identify and determine what properties are significant and warrant recognition through designation. Most jurisdictions reviews use some variation of the California Register of Historical Resources criteria, which includes four criteria, properties that are associated with historic events or trends, properties that are associated with the lives of important people to history, properties that exemplify architectural design are associated with a representative work of an important architect or designer, and then four is information, or I'm sorry, properties that have the potential to yield information. And that last one is most often used for archaeological resources, but not exclusively. Oh, let me, that's to say, so California registered adoption was the most common that we saw in cities' local ordinances, while others use some kind of variation of California Register criteria. Common variations included a reference to community aesthetics, historic signs, or the rarity of the type of building. Some jurisdictions that have more than four criteria require a resource also meet more than one criteria to be eligible. Also, many municipalities allow adoption by reference, which means a resource that is listed in the National California Register are automatically listed locally. Recognizing that not all historic resources are maybe the same, some jurisdictions implement a tiered system for designation, although only a few of those that we reviewed included this kind of system, 18% of the cities we reviewed have some kind of tiered designation. Tier designation allows recognition of different levels of significance. Commonly, cities will have something like a city landmark building and then a structure of merit. They can provide flexibility on the level of protection, design review, and availability of incentives, but can also create more complexity for management and review and create ambiguity. So overall, preservation ordinances are widely utilized as a planning tool throughout the region and state to guide the treatment of historic resources. Reviewing bodies. Designation decisions at the local level are based on first, clear criteria for designation, and second, application of the criteria by a reviewing body. There are two general approaches. One is to embed the responsibility in another existing body, like a planning commission, or creating a separate reviewing body. 45% of the cities that we studied have a separate reviewing body, and 70% of those have their historic review board or architecture review board, whatever they choose to call it, they have them set up as advisory to the next level. So either advisory to planning commission, advisory to city council. The benefits of a separate reviewing body is that you can draw on local expertise for your board makeup, but creating a new board also adds staff and time, program costs, and would have board recruitment requirements. And so you have to consider the potential workload of that commission and whether it would make sense to have them have an agenda you have to fill. Historic districts. Historic district designations are possible in both the National and California Register under any of the four evaluative criteria that I presented earlier. Historic districts are recognized for possessing a significant concentration, linkage, or continuity of sites, buildings, structures, or objects, either united historically or aesthetically by plan or development. 73% of the study, the cities, sorry, the study cities that we looked at have the ability to create historic, or sorry, designate historic districts. Of the 73% of municipalities reviewed that have the ability to establish historic districts, seven cities had additional processes that included differences in the role of the property owner or an enhanced community outreach process or different criteria considerations. For some cities, they had more information in their ordinance on who could submit nominations for historic districts, they had different thresholds for consent, they had different numbers for percentage of ownership considerations. Some required a more robust community engagement effort to ensure that people were informed of the process and what the steps were for designation. And still more, or another aspect that some cities engaged in was having different or additional criteria for designating historic district. One city required them to use the National Register of Historic Places criteria, and another city we looked at required the historic district nomination to include a historic preservation plan that had their goals for the district included in the application. So the identification and protection of a local historic district is a popular function in historic preservation ordinances and can be treated differently than individual resources in the designation and in the regulation process. So owner consent. Most of the municipalities we studied did not include owner consent, but owner consent is a policy decision. And at the January meeting, council expressed desire to include consent in the city's historic preservation ordinance. So I'm going to present the different approaches to consent. There is affirmative or express consent, which requires a property owner's clear agreement to designation. Owner veto, which would not allow for designation to occur over the property owner's objection. And protest provisions, which would allow a city to designate historic property over an owner's objection, if a supermajority of the reviewing body votes to do so. And a reminder that this would only apply to the local process. If a project were subject to CEQA, a state mandated environmental review process, there is no opportunity to opt out of required review in that. So 41% of the cities that we looked at require owner consent for local designation. Of the cities with the consent requirement for designation, most accomplished it through a form of affirmative or express consent and typically required the property, required the property to initiate an application for designation. I'm sorry, let me restate that. The most common approach to owner consent was having the nomination have to originate with the property owner. And that could also be presented with an application that included some kind of affirmation from the property owner that they were aware of the nomination. In most of the municipalities that do not require owner consent, third-party nominations are allowed without any limitations typically. In four of the historic preservation ordinances that we reviewed, they had a kind of middle ground approach to this, where applications for designation had to come from the property owner, but they could also be initiated by one of the city's governing bodies, such as a historic review board or planning commission or council, but not another third party. None of the jurisdictions reviewed include examples of owner veto or protest provisions. As far as I can tell, protest provisions are extremely rare. I will say owner veto, both the California and National Register are examples of owner veto. We're still on owner consent, I have more to say. There were also some different approaches to owner consent in historic districts. So most municipalities that required historic, or I'm sorry, that required owner consent did not have a different process for historic districts, suggesting that they mostly were using the same system. But there were some jurisdictions that did call out a different process for consent in designating historic districts. Where there were consent requirements for historic districts, it occurred at one of two junctures. One, either the application phase, or two, designation. So in some cities, the nomination for historic district must originate or be supported by a certain percentage of property owners within the proposed district to continue. So if they didn't have that, it wouldn't move on to the next phase of the process. And others' historic districts may be nominated by anybody, but it would not be designated without a certain number of support. That certain number of support varied from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Some municipalities had language where it said like a majority, some said 60%, some said a supermajority, so there was a lot of variety on that number. Some cities require consent at both phases, requiring that the application must originate from within a certain group of ownership in the district, and also could not be designated without a threshold of property owner support. So some jurisdictions had that requirement in both parts of the process. So some jurisdictions had that requirement in both parts of the process. So some things to consider with owner consent: including owner consent in historic preservation ordinance requires some additional considerations. You have to determine the type and timing of consent requirements and the ability to address future scenarios. Ownership changes, for example. Would designation decisions run with the property or the property owner? If it runs with the property and ownership changes and a new owner does not wish to be designated, what's the delisting process? If you do have a delisting process, who can initiate that process? If a property were delisted, would it preclude it from being relisted? You also have to consider the relationship to incentives. Can a property owner list their property to take advantage of a potential incentive, and once the life of the incentive is over, be able to delist the property? In historic districts, if a certain threshold of consent is required for designation of a historic district, you have to decide how you're going to count property owners if you have multiple property owners and they don't agree with each other, how you're going to address that situation, how to deal with multiple scenario where within a district there's one property owner who owns several properties. Are they going to get to vote per property or as an individual? And then there might be consideration of how you treat non-contributing property owners in a district. Would you have them have the same voting power as a property owner to a contributing So there are several different approaches to owner consent. Inclusion of owner consent in a preservation ordinance requires considerations of future scenarios to be effective. And then effects of designation. A historic preservation ordinance should make clear what being locally designated means. This is an area where the ordinance can be especially tailored to the community and the community's needs. Mostly what we've talked about so far has been the act of identifying resources, and this part gets to what the goals and results of that identification are. Common effects of designation include design review, which usually has some kind of additional review during your permitting process, restrictions on demolition, either by delay or denial for listed resources, which the city already has in their existing ordinance, a duty of maintenance, which requires a certain level of upkeep for listed buildings, which the city also currently has in their ordinance, and then permit review. The type and conditions for permit review offer the most opportunity for flexibility. You can exempt certain types of work, which could be maintenance, regular maintenance work. You can allow for staff-level approval of certain classifications of review. If you adopt a tiered designation system, you can allow more leniency in changes for your lower-tier resources. And if you decide to have the ability to designate historic districts, you can allow more leniency in district contributors and non-contributors than you would for individually listed resources. So development of effects of designation in historic preservation ordinance is an important tool for a community to decide how and when they want to regulate affected properties. I think I'm passing it back to Zach.
All right. Thank you, Julianne. So before the council this evening, we're coming forward with four questions that we're seeking direction on to continue this update effort. The first is looking at moving forward with an update to our preservation ordinance as outlined in the report and the presentation. The staff recommendation for now is to identify the reviewing body as the Planning Commission in an advisory capacity, recognizing that there's other work going on, including a comprehensive zoning code update, and this is something that could be revisited once we know a full scope of work. But we also want to recognize the considerations that go into the creation of a new body, the staff resources, and other workload, and understanding what additional work would be generated annually with this ordinance. Is there a lot? Is there a small amount? And so that would be, that's the basis for our recommendation for identifying the Planning Commission for now, knowing that we can revisit that at a later date. The second is the criteria for designation, and if we want to look at opportunities to go beyond the California Register. The third question is related to including a mechanism to designate districts locally, and if so, what level of support should we evaluate for adding to the ordinance? And then the last question is related to the form of owner consent that should be included in the preservation ordinance, and should it focus just on historic districts or for all designations? And so next steps, as was noted earlier, following this study session, we'll be embarking on community outreach and engagement, and then moving forward with preparation of the updated historic preservation ordinance that we'll then publish for community review and then bring back through the adoption process for review and comment by the Planning Commission and City Council. And we want to highlight the different ways that the community can get involved in this effort. We do have a webpage on the city's website that provides updates and information. We have the ability to sign up for alerts. We're going to be moving forward with various events and activities that we encourage everyone to get involved with. And we have developed the opportunity to submit a digital time capsule to provide information and recognize the city's history. As we know, all of our residents have unique stories and information to share about the community's history. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation, and we'll just reshare this slide with questions for direction after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation. I will now open public comment. Mr. Clerk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newsom. If you intended on speaking on this item and you have not yet provided me with your request to speak slip, please do so now. We'll be announcing the name of the final speaker before we proceed. If you're joining us in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. A brief note on our rules of decorum while I'm tallying the total number of speakers. Our motto in San Mateo is give respect, get respect. We ask that you please refrain from any cheering, booing, or hissing during public comment as it can put a chill on public comment. So in person, our final speaker will be Lisa Van de Vorday, and in our virtual environment, our final speaker will be Michael Weinauer. After this point, we will not be taking any additional requests to speak. So Mayor Newsom, I have a total of seventeen requests to speak, so per adopted council rules and procedures, that'll be two minutes per speaker.
Okay.
Perfect. So if I call your name, if you can please line up to my...
Through the mayor, just, it's six oh one, and we have a really packed agenda at seven.
We're gonna be okay.
Yeah, so, but seventeen, two minutes.
We need to leave time for our conversation as well, sir.
Yeah. Or we do that at the end.
Are someone suggesting something other?
I'd say I would move limit comment to one minute.
I second.
Through the mayor, I would ask that we please not do that, because frankly, there will be times where we feel we wish to move along with public comment, and there are times in which we feel we'd like to have as much public comment as possible. And having regulations on our public comment helps us avoid temptations to move in one way or the other.
I agree with the deputy mayor.
So just to confirm, then, we'll go a certain amount over potentially in this discussion, and then it would go to the end of the meeting.
Correct.
I think the city manager might want to say something.
Just want to see the mayor's going to keep with two minutes.
Two minutes.
So it's two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that'll help us make sure we get through our comments expeditiously. Our first three speakers will be Mike Etheridge, followed by Sean Farrenbrook and Kolja Schlotter.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Newsom. Council members and neighbors, thanks for the time, and thanks for the two minutes. In 2020, a family I've known for over two decades bought a property on Fairfax Avenue, and they went through the wringer on getting their design plans approved and executed. As part of this, there was an appeal to the Planning Commission in July of 2022, and I spoke in favor of this family, which is an absolute asset to the city and this community, and the beautiful design of their dream home. With all the hurdles and delays that were thrown at them from a handful of people in that neighborhood, they are only just moving into that house this month, five years after purchasing. At that Planning Commission meeting in 2022, I noted how sad it was that this amazing family, who I've known for decades, were not made to feel welcome into that neighborhood because there was disagreement on their design of their home that met objective standards. All of us who bought homes in San Mateo have done so with our own ideas and thoughts of what we would like our property to look like and our own ideas of community. I personally believe that diversity in architecture is a positive element. We don't live in Irvine, California, with cookie-cutter, monochrome homes and designs. Are the historic designation efforts about control for a handful of people so the properties look like what they want it to look like, or is it for what the owners and the community want? I'm to understand a vast majority of residents in Baywood are against historic district. With this in mind, I just want to encourage the council in this process to, one, make sure that these meaningful decisions that you're making in this process are reflective of what the people in the community want, that it's not just a delaying tactic.
Thank you.
And please prioritize affirmative consent.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Sean Farrenbrook, followed by Kolja Schlotter and Rich Hedges.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. I wish to speak to impact of designation. It was in the reports you just received. There was one glaring omission in this, that it's kind of a recent thing, the last couple of years. On October 21st of last year, I brought to the council's attention of a letter I received from my insurance company saying that any property that they have that's designated historic, they will no longer insure. Some people might think I'm lying. I gave the letter, and just in case you think I was lying, I asked for you to ask city staff to do some research. The council directed city staff to do some research on this, and to the best of my knowledge, this report was not done. I believe they ran some stumbling blocks on this. I don't think it's incompetence. I think it's just a lack of resources. It's a relatively simple thing, you would think, and yet it just kind of shows you how hard some of this stuff can be. This is old business, so technically, we should be able to revisit this right now, whatever happened to this report. And this is the type of things that city staff's going to get into in granularity, and it's going to take up a lot of time. So I just want to point this out. If you do go down this path, my request is heavy on consent, affirmative consent, at least two-thirds consent, and just be aware of the impacts this has on people. The insurance thing is a relatively new thing, and I don't think that the insurance consultants or the historical consultants are really aware of how much this has developed yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Kolja, followed by Rich Hedges and Connie Weiss.
Good evening, council. This proposal is fundamentally flawed in our San Mateo resident priorities. In a statistically significant 2025 citywide survey commissioned by the city of San Mateo, only 2.8% of residents listed historic preservation as a concern. So why the urgency here? There is no legal mandate to rush this and no public demand either. The ringtone proposal includes zero community outreach on necessity, meaning we even need or want this. No survey asking whether residents want the new ordinance, no attempt to gauge public sentiment, and no processes to validate that community support. Councilmember Diaz Nash publicly stated she wanted to hear from the community on these exact questions. So why is that part missing in the outreach? The proposal calls for a new historic commission, added bureaucracy, and expanded oversight, but at what cost? The initial $500,000 allocated so far is just the beginning. This will cost millions over the next decade to implement and enforce a policy that benefits only a small activist minority. San Mateo's truly historic properties are already protected. This effort appears less about preservation and more about handing land use power to a small activist group through red tape and commissions. And let's not forget, the San Mateo Heritage Alliance explicitly promised this council they wouldn't pursue the Baywood State application while the city process was underway. Their promise was broken. They misled this body. Council made clear in January that a high bar affirmative consent requirement was non-negotiable must be part of any city ordinance. That absolutely must remain. You've heard from hundreds of residents, the will of the constituents is clear. Affirmative consent must mean at least two-thirds local approval. San Mateo residents want community peace, not division. This has to be a high bar.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rich Hedges, followed by Connie Weiss and Dave Cohen.
Good evening. Nice to see you all, your bright, shiny faces. I'm not against historic districts. What I'm against is the horrible divide we've had in Baywood, a community where a large number of our city council members have come from, that work together to make it a better place. And I think that bond has been forever broken. That makes me very sad. I think that we need a system where people can register their concerns formally. There needs to be an opt-out provision in our plan for historic neighborhoods. I'm also concerned because I think there is some feeling in the historical alliance to move this to other neighborhoods. We have a lot of neighborhoods with 1940s and 50 homes, often originally 900 square feet. People need often to expand these homes, or in some cases, because they're full of mold, to tear them down. This ordinance will really put a kink in that. Don't do this to working-class neighborhoods who may need to do some major changes to property, and many of them who are in the building trades have the skills to do that. So my whole intention is, and I did not see it, and I'm pretty troubled because the city council wanted it when I was on the council, I brought it up, an opt-out provision. It has to be in there. If it's not in there, don't spend the money. And just to make sure you know, I'm not against historical neighborhoods. I want to work with the first-in-Dellaware people. That's the oldest homes in this city. I've had a plan to do that now for a couple of years, and as soon as we get this put together, I want to work with a couple of people to make it happen.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Connie Weiss, followed by Dave Cohen and Anna Cure.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and City Council members. First, I want to thank staff and the consultants for an insightful and thorough presentation on what is before us as a community. For council, please stay focused on this important topic and do the right thing for San Mateo's continued attractiveness as a place to live. Please stand strong against the fear mongering and lies spread by those aligned with opposing agendas. Our city deserves to construct an ordinance that truly represents its commitment to the general plan and to San Mateo's historic resources. Please protect the work you will be doing by identifying a body that will administer the ordinance with respect and with the intent as defined by the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Dave Cohen, followed by Anna Cure and Jay Cure.
Honorable mayor and City Council members, the progress that this council has made to establish an enforceable code of conduct is remarkable. It must be remembered, the rules in themselves are not the end goal, though. Trust in you, trust in our government, is what is critically important. You have an opportunity to implement your promises for unbiased governance. The staff recommendation to appoint or anoint the Planning Commission with power over historic preservation would be a huge step backwards. I need not remind you of the outrageous behavior on the part of several members of the Planning Commission. Having the Planning Commission responsible in select cities may work, but here, not with a history of bias and ferocious opposition to historic districts. And the option to opt out? Let's see what other laws of few aggressively vocal people don't like, and then let them opt out and see what the results are. And it was just now, hearing this by the presentation, there are many options that the consultant gave. Some of them will obviously take more work, others less work, staff and money. However, the only discussion about that was in who should administer the program. However, the only discussion about that was in who should administer the program. Do what you've promised to do. Give us a fair and unbiased government. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Anna Cure, followed by Jay Cure and Frank Elliott.
Anna Cure from Baywood. What is happening in San Mateo currently regarding historic preservation has received national attention. I am in fact in touch with companies back east who have fought this fight because they're worried about people losing their property rights. This consent-based ordinance needs a very high threshold, like 80. Other community leaders have even said as high as 90%. The higher, the better. So this fighting will not be duplicated in other neighborhoods. That's the problem. Other neighborhoods don't want this fight spreading. We need a solid ordinance that doesn't need to be rewritten in a year, like other cities in Palo Alto and Laguna Beach. They've had to revisit it and make changes to the ordinance because it didn't go over well the way they thought. Now, unfortunately to you, Mayor Newsom, I do have something I want to clear up. In January, 250 letters came in bearing our names and addresses, asking for consent. Our voices are heard through these emails. Our emails are the only vehicle we have to communicate, since you only normally give us a minute or two minutes up here. Please do not insult your constituents by calling our email spam or AI. These are real people fighting for their property rights. In closing, I've been asked to pose this question. I know that you've all approved a $500,000 expenditure, which includes staff time, as a result of something that's in the general plan. But I have a question for staff through our mayor. Has there been a large influx of historic nominations lately? Is there a long queue somewhere that we don't know about? Are we not able to meet public demand to justify this huge expense when there is a $10 million plus deficit looming over our heads?
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jay Cure, followed by Frank Elliott and Rick Bonilla.
Jay Cure, resident of Baywood. I sent you a letter late this afternoon. Please read it if you have not had the chance. I am not a ferocious fear monger of historic preservation. I have never lied. I sent, at the first meeting with the alliance, I expressed my concern about how non-responsive properties were to be counted. The state process is intentionally biased towards the approval of all nominations. If the owner does not object, by default, they accept. This is unfair and undemocratic. In whatever action the city takes moving forward, I implore you to include option one from page seven of the RINCON report, affirmative expressed consent. That requires the property owner's clear agreement to designation. Additionally, I add the provision that non-response properties not be counted in favor or against the nomination. That's fair. That's democratic. Please make the right decision. Mandate owner consent quoted, and quoting from the page nine of the RINCON report ultimately is up to the city council to decide what direction to provide on the subject of owner We must consent to being forced to spend the money, time, and effort to protect history.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Frank Elliott, followed by Rick Bonilla and Zev Simon.
Good evening, and thank you for the two minutes. It was a good presentation, and you're obviously very knowledgeable about what you're talking about. But I think my reaction also is, it's a very complicated topic, and we're going to need somebody like this, maybe two people like this, to really do this effectively. And so I really want people to think about how much they understand about what's been said and what's in the report, and contemplate on that. I am not against historic. I want to celebrate the history of San Mateo. It's just, I think we should do it in inclusive ways. I've heard ideas about, put a plaque out where Talbot's was. Let's celebrate that toy store that was here so, so long. We don't have to keep that building just like it was. But really, I think we're conflating two things in this presentation. The local process probably can be whatever we want, and I think consent is important for that. But why we're here tonight is because there's a state process that's going on that does not provide consent for homeowners. And there's been confusion among council and among people in the audience as to what that means for homeowners. I believe that that means we're going to have to follow SEQA, and the city has little flexibility. And for that reason, I think we need to spend time talking about what those ordinances will look like and whether we can escape those state-manded requirements. We need to understand that. That's why we're here. That's why we're arguing, not because we're against historic, but because we're afraid. We don't know what's coming, and we're getting ready to spend this money, and I don't know what's coming. And I don't think council fully understands what's coming. I think we owe it to ourselves to have a better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Rick Bonilla, followed by Zev Simon and Eleanor Dogen.
Good evening, council members. Historically, we know that society's made many mistakes. In fact, in this country, we're now renaming schools and places where we are finding that not all things of the past need or deserve to be protected, or as in this case, made once again exclusive. Only in our exclusive past would we have thought that the owners of a property need not be considered when deciding to restrict anything about their private residence. Now, I know from what I hear that we're trying to make sure that doesn't happen. I really hope so. We have little control over the state and their rubber stamping board over there, so let's be careful. As we know, San Mateo is better when we are together. If you feel compelled to allow some type of a change to the status of our homes, then please be sure to set a very high bar for individual owner consent. Also, make sure not to divide the people of San Mateo any further, fashion any policy in a way that makes us more inclusive. We need any new policies to work for the good of all San Mateo residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Zev Simon, followed by Eleanor Dogen and Andrew Ryan.
Good evening, mayor, council. I'm here for two reasons. One, I felt the historic preservation on my own skin. It'll take time to, if you invite me, and I'll explain to you and tell you the stories. A simple one of them was 10 years ago, when I demolished, wanted to demolish a home on Prospect Row. Any kid would have said that this home is, it was a Sears Roebuck package from 1830s, but I had to take a historical expert to write a three-page report, cost me $6,500. Delayed the project four months, for what? No historic importance, it can be demolished. Anybody could have seen that, but it still cost half a year almost, and $6,500. And this is really the experience I had in San Mateo. But I had experiences in San Francisco, and San Francisco's trying to get out of this trap in North Beach, where there is no development whatsoever. Nobody even is remodeling a home because of this historic preservation thing. It's a trap. It looks good on paper, but at the end, when time goes by, people realize that there's more negatives to it. It's not that we don't have to protect historical assets, true assets, not privately owned homes. Privately owned homes are owned by, I don't need to even continue with that. So please, make it democratic. Make sure that there is a real serious consent, so that these wars and these fights do not go forever.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Eleanor Dogen, followed by Andrew Ryan and Lori Watanuki.
Dear city council, your district voters are likely to be against their homes being put in a historic district. Baywood owners overwhelmingly are against it by a ratio of nine to one. Very real people sending in very real letters, 90% against, 10% for, and emails to you against. Why? The financial implications are significant. Historic or even eligible to be historic puts owners at risk of losing their homeowner's insurance and increases the time and cost of sensible projects to update homes. This is why express affirmative owner consent is the only way to proceed, and the most conservative paths should be taken. And there is already an existing city process for getting community input and owner consent, the parking permit process. 50% minimum participation, two thirds of responses must be four. On consent, the city should leverage this understood process as a first step before any other work is undertaken. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Andrew Ryan, followed by Lori Watanuki and Tom Lees.
The role of historic preservation in the community should be to unite the community around honoring important elements of our shared past. Downtown San Mateo is a great example. Business owners and residents both agree that San Mateo's historic downtown is worth preserving for future generations. It's an asset to the city. But without that unity, historic preservation can tear communities apart, seeing neighbor against neighbor and bringing unwanted negative attention to San Mateo. This is what's happening in Baywood right now, where a small fringe group is trying to impose a historic district on us despite overwhelming community opposition. This is why we're asking council for an affirmative consent process for owners with an 80% threshold for districts. Historic designation is both impactful and irreversible under most California law, and should only be undertaken when the community is strongly united around the effort. Now, to address the four questions that city council's getting tonight, should staff proceed with drafting updates, the ordinance? Well, I don't know. You know, you can decide that. I say, I don't think it's worth it, but you can. Should the criteria for a local historic designation conform to the California Register? I think that criteria is very problematic. There's a lot of vagueness. It's what the OHP uses, and they approve 100% of their applications, so you should really watch out for that. Third one, should the preservational ordinance include historic districts? I say no, at least for residential historic districts. Sure, downtown can stay residential, you're asking for endless Baywoods, you know? And lastly, what form of owner consent? Well, I think we're pretty clear, affirmative consent. You have to say yes. You know, it's 2025, I can't actually believe we're having a discussion on what consent means, but here you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Lori Watanuki, followed by Tom Lees and Lisa Vandevord.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and the city council members. Thank you for starting this process for historic preservation. It's important to proceed with ordinance updates since it's included as a value and goal in the San Mateo general plan. It is important to educate the community with an overview of the current process and its effect of designation before asking for input into this very important part of the general plan. Please defer consent details until we have a draft ordinance. The public can only make an informed decision with more explanation from the consultants and should be deferred to a later meeting. The reviewing body should be a separate historic preservation commission or designate a city department for oversight with an architectural historian or committee with community development planner with a historic preservation, with historic preservation experience, with an architectural historian. We should recognize San Mateo's unique history and development with a process for local designation, and this would enable property owners to have access to state historic preservation funds for rehabilitation, which would be less costly than the state or federal designations. It's important to recognize that many older neighborhoods want to maintain their individual historic character and their smaller pre-war bungalow homes. The funding is out of reach to go through this formal designation process. The bar was set very high in the 1989 building survey to get recognition. Are these additional measures, such as creating individual neighborhood zones for older neighborhoods in the objective design standards, for older neighborhoods?
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Tom Lees, followed by Lisa Vandevord.
I enjoyed the RINCON consultant's presentation about the electrification. I went to two of them, and there was no consent offered for me not getting, so I could still get a gas stove or a gas furnace, though. I'm wondering if we add consent here, if we're going to be able to add consent to homeowners who don't want to put in a gas furnace, who want to put in a gas furnace or a gas stove. I Googled consent, and I'll just read what I found out. In general, requiring owner consent for individual historic property designations is not recommended and is rarely included in historic preservation ordinances. While some ordinances may have included such provisions in the past, it is generally considered counterproductive to historic preservation efforts. Why owner consent is discouraged. It can lead to inconsistencies. If consent is required, it creates a system where individuals can choose whether or not to be bound by preservation regulations, which undermines the purpose of a consistent ordinance. It can be difficult to enforce. If consent is required, it can be challenging to designate historic properties that are deemed significant but for which owner consent is not obtained. It can be seen as a loophole. Property owners can use the consent requirement to avoid preservation regulations, effectively negating the ordinance's purpose. So I hope the city will follow the generally accepted practices of not going to extraordinary lengths to appease special interest groups, of which many are my friends, and I hope continue to be my friends, no matter which way we go. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Lisa Vandevord.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and also for two minutes, because what I had on paper, I would have had to talk like an auctioneer to get it across. So I did send a much longer public comment via email today. I just want to make highlight really two points in case you haven't had a chance to read it. First of all, excuse me, the planning commission should not be the designated authority of the historic ordinance. Their track record of opposition to historic resources in decisions made on development projects, in comments here in chambers, in the newspaper, The Daily Journal, and in social media disqualifies them. Tasking them with historic preservation is like putting the fox in charge of the henhouse. We are better served with a small, unbiased body of preservation, planning, and development experts. On the topic of owner consent, I am opposed. The identification, protection, and preservation of historic resources is the city's obligation and not for property owners to decide. Historic policy protects architecture and history that belongs to the broader community, not to individuals. And think about the precedent. If you're giving consent here, shouldn't homeowners have consent to comply with conversion to electric, as Tom just mentioned? Shouldn't homeowners have consent to put a bike lane in front of their house? That is one slippery slope, and it's dangerous. I don't really think you want to go there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And moving to our virtual environment, where our final speaker will be Michael Weinauer. Michael, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time tonight. First of all, I just want to echo, thank you for sticking with two minutes. I can't underscore that enough, and I hope council members Fernandez and Sverko Gudiky, you will take pains to not go to one minute, unless it's absolutely necessary. It's just not sufficient. It's just not sufficient, and public comment is way too important. I really only have one or two things. And first of all, the main thing is you cannot let the planning commission be the sort of body in charge of this. That would really be, as Lisa Vandevord aptly said, you'd really be opening the gates to the Trojan horse there. You've done amazing work putting the code of conduct in place and revising that. Staff seemed to have resources to do that when Ethics San Mateo offered to have a board of citizens that would do that. They said they have plenty of resources. I'm curious why they all of a sudden wouldn't have the resources to do that. And yeah, until we have trust regained in terms of the planning commission, the ones that are on there, and the new ones have said some concerning things, where until we can be assured that they'll set aside their activism and govern in the best interests of the entire city, we just don't trust them. So it's really important to get this ordinance right, and I trust that you'll do that. I hope you'll do it for residents, for our children, and in memory of our friend Keith Weber, for whom the history of San Mateo was so very important. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Great. Thank you, everyone, for your public comment tonight. We're going to close public comment and go to questions, comments, directions from council. We're going to start from the left, and then we'll go to the right. So please.
Okay. I think I'm on the left. Thank you. Thank you to Zach and the team. I really appreciate it. I learned a lot, and I think all of us did, that there is a lot of detail, a lot of nuance in all of this, and I appreciate the fact that you took the time to share that. I also would have preferred the community outreach happen before we started talking about the details of the ordinance, but we agreed as a council that we would do parallel paths. So we're here tonight talking about the ordinance. I hope after we do the community outreach, that we have the opportunity to weigh in and see if there's any change in the ordinance we'd like to make based on what we hear the community say, because I agree with many people tonight. We do need to listen to what the community has to say very seriously. I have a couple of questions before I get into my comments. And number one, how do we intend to continue community education after this summer outreach period is over? Because so much of what I heard that was concerned were specific questions like, can I put an ADA ramp in front of my house if it's historic? Can I add solar panels? Can I do this? Can I do that? Will there be a place on the website? Will there be a summary of what is actually protected so people have to go through gobbledygook, sorry, of ordinances to really understand the directions and make it easier for them?
Yes, we have an active FAQ section, both for related historic districts and also for this historic preservation ordinance effort. And so we'll continue to build upon that as we get input and questions come in. And staff is always available to talk to folks, talk through. And following adoption, we will have an implementation, putting together materials and other processes and information that then the public can utilize to understand the ordinance that was adopted. So we have our focused outreach that'll inform what we ultimately bring back to planning commission and council, and then that'll fold into our regular process like any other city policy or ordinance, where we then support the community understanding and awareness of it.
Great. That will be so important, because your voice really is a voice of the city, and that'll be just a great source to go to. Also, in terms of the outreach, I understand you're going to be doing interviews. Will you specifically be including interviews with people who have a lot of knowledge about the history of San Mateo, whether it's the San Mateo County Historical Alliance, whether it's people here in San Mateo who've been involved with previous historic efforts? So you get all that knowledge that can otherwise disappear.
Yes, we include, as outlined in the community outreach and engagement strategy, we include focus group interviews and interactions. We also have community meetings, and we welcome input and comments, and that'll also guide who we engage with, because the goal is to really talk to the full spectrum of members of the community to get their input, because everyone has valuable insights that feed into what the community historic context is and could guide what goes into the preservation ordinance.
Right. And getting everybody's opinion, very important. Okay, so just moving on, as you've heard tonight, there are a lot of very passionate, heartfelt opinions about what we should be doing here. But I think I heard that everybody agrees that San Mateo has a unique beauty that comes from its history as well as its desire to be a forward, modern-looking city. And we committed in our general plan that we wanted to blend the old with the new, as you said, preserving and celebrating what makes so many of us want to live in San Mateo while embracing new technologies, new trends that San Mateo even 50 years ago couldn't have imagined. And while our general plan is our strategic vision, its efforts like this historic resources program, like our downtown strategic plan, they're going to become the real building blocks to get us there. And I really encourage everyone to be involved in these outreach discussions. I hope there is active outreach to a wide cross-section of neighbors and neighborhoods across the city, not just in any one area. We have beautiful resources all throughout the city and to show what they want San Mateo to be going forward. And I really believe that San Mateo's history is not just buildings, but it's the people who made the buildings, the people who made us, and we need to figure out how to include that. So with that in mind, answering your questions. Number one, yes, I do believe that staff should proceed with drafting the updates to the preservation ordinance as it's detailed by staff. And yes, definitely, we need a clear reviewing body. And while I agree in theory with what Director Doll said about not wanting to have additional resource on staff and really going with the planning commission initially, I disagree in practice on this particular thing respectfully, because no matter what amount of new work is going to be created, and we don't know. It's a new effort. That new effort and new work is going to happen no matter who reviews it. So I do agree that the reviewing body's work should be really strictly confined to major appeals, like the demolition of a building or a major, major change to the front, and that all the other things should be covered by the ordinance, which is why I hope that ordinance is extremely detailed so people don't have to go to a committee in order to find out whether they can put new windows in. They should be able to put new windows in, and they shouldn't have to go before people. But what we've heard tonight and know already is that historic resources are a complex and a highly technical field. And I believe very strongly that the proposed review board has to have established historic preservation expertise as we learn how to implement this ordinance. And just as importantly, if not more so, as we've read in the papers, we've seen ourselves, San Mateo is going to have more new development proposals, and you know that, Director Doll, because you're trying to figure out how to make it work, than any other city in the Bay Area. And we need to keep our planning commissions laser-focused on that. So I would really recommend that we don't go that way. We saw what happened with Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission earlier this year. They have many important things to do. They had to delay everything for three or four months to deal with appeals of small cell tower application approvals. And while they did it with the best of intent, at the end of the day, everybody agreed that it should go to a hearing officer, because that was a better way to do it than having the sick do it. So I would really recommend that not be the case. And so what I would suggest, and totally open for details, is to establish an advisory committee to advise the planning commission, composed of potentially one member of community development who has been dealing with these requests for renovation that have already happened in the city, somebody who has real-life experience, one of our historic consultants that we have on retainer when we need additional information, and then a third, an architect who has experience dealing with historic items, to know whether something is worthy of it or, as a number of people said, really isn't worthy of it. And I think it should be an advisory committee, and I would say, let's go back in a year and look at it. So I sort of take the opposite of what you said. I want to start with the committee to keep it lean, mean, not a big commission, and have them do the work, figure it out, and then go from there. Number two, should the criteria for local designation conform to CRHR requirements? Or should there be additional ones? Yes, I think we should start with the CRHR requirements, because they've been tested. But I think we have to recognize that there may be additional requirements that we hear during our public outreach. And one of them that I can think of, that I don't think can be used under the existing requirements, is how do we acknowledge the incredible contribution of our Japanese-American community in building the history of San Mateo and who we are today in so many ways? It goes well beyond the businesses. So I would want to really look at how do we do things that are not building-structured? Number three, do we want to start? Let's see. Should it include a mechanism to designate historic districts locally? And what kind of owner support should be included? Yes, I think the ordinance should include a mechanism to designate historic districts locally. And I hope, as one of our speakers said, we can make it a whole lot simpler, more streamlined, and less expensive than the state and federal route. I definitely believe the community support should be required in the local designation, and we have heard this from our community. And looking through the staff report, I really liked the way the city of Glendale did it, which was basically saying that three people can nominate a historic district, but it has to be a circulation of a petition by the city to all property owners within a district, and 25% of them have to say, we want to go forward with that investigation, because that's going to be a lot of investigation before you even get to the end. And it's going to be both residents as well as city resources. And then if the ones confirm, the second City of San Mateo petition should be sent out again to the proposed district, and it will not be listed without support of at least 50% of the properties within the district. So that is what I think would be a feasible way of doing it, really very much. Those are high numbers to get to, and so I think we would get a lot of support. And it does require some additional survey work by the city, but it makes the process transparent, people, their voices be heard at the beginning and the end of the process. And I think that that's a clear way of going forward. And then once again, if we feel we need to take a look in a year, we can, but I think this is a good way to go forward. And then in terms of owner consent, I think it should be affirmative express consent by the community when it comes to historic districts. And I believe that affirmative express consent by the homeowner is appropriate when an individual building they own could be considered for historic designation. I think that is their right. I don't believe that owner veto or protest provision should be included, and the fact that no one else has leads me to believe it's difficult and that it really comes down to consent of the community for historic districts locally and individual consent for individual properties. So that's my thought.
Just wanted to thank everybody for coming to this study session. This continues to be a topic of great interest to the city. So I appreciate everybody's taking the time. So I'm just going to cut to the chase. Should staff proceed with drafting updates to the historic preservation ordinance to identify the enabling authority? Yes. Should we establish a reviewing body? I do not believe it should be the planning commission. I would actually like it to be the Community Relations Commission. The Community Relations Commission, its mission is to represent the community, underserved voices. And I think that that's important, and it's made up of people that come from diverse backgrounds in this community, not necessarily one neighborhood or one academic background. I'd like to see this study designated to the CRC. At this point, I believe they meet once a quarter. So they're not meeting once a month or multiple times a month like the planning commission. So they do have the capacity, I would think, to do this. And also, it falls under the CDD House, and so your staff would already be involved in that. So that's where I would personally like to see it. Okay, two. Should the criteria for a local historic designation conform to the California Register of Historic Resources requirements? I would actually like to see additional criteria be included to acknowledge the city's unique history and development. Should the historic preservation ordinance include a mechanism to designate historic districts locally? Yes. Should owner support be required? Absolutely, and I would say 80% or above, 85%, 90% if possible. What form of owner consent should be included in the historic preservation ordinance? I'd like to see affirmative express consent along with owner veto and protest options. And the owner consent requirement should apply to all local designations. And that's where I am.
Thank you, Thu, the mayor. I'm going to try to start with just a couple or a few brief questions. I think I have one question related to the effects we can expect from designation, local designation of resources. I believe I heard in the presentation as an example that the city will always need to implement CEQA where CEQA needs to be implemented. And one of the questions shown in one of the slides related to CEQA was determining whether a resource is historic. And so I guess I'm going to try to use that language to see if I can get clarity on, does that question refer to any sort of historic designation, be it local, state, or national?
Yes. So there is a definition for historical resources in the CEQA guidelines, and it includes very clear language on what that is, which it does encompass locally designated resources in addition to those listed or found eligible for National and California Register.
I see. So I think just to make clear, you mentioned local designations, including what we're basically talking about tonight.
Yes, and then also during the CEQA process, if a potential historical resource is identified in the project that is falling under CEQA review, if there is no determination on whether the property is historic or not, an evaluation must be done on properties that are over 45 years old to determine if they are historical resources or not. So during that process, one would look first at, is it an identified resource? Or is it an of-age resource that has not been identified that needs to be evaluated? And then at that point, it's evaluated against California Register criteria and then any local criteria as well. That's CEQA.
And just adding on to that, one of the benefits of having an updated local ordinance along with the historic context statement is that that will enable us to establish screening criteria and set a baseline. So without having to do a full evaluation of each property that maybe hits that age limit, we'll now have the ability to look at it, look at what we already have adopted, and use that to guide whether there is further CEQA analysis required. So a stronger updated local ordinance and this other information can actually make it easier and more streamlined for a lot of properties to get through that CEQA process, because we already have a baseline established for what's important and what to evaluate. And if it still makes it through the screening, then we would do that more detailed analysis. But this would also help a number of projects that are maybe marginal and ultimately would be found to be not historic. They could screen out and have a defensible basis for that.
There was some discussion of tiered designations, and I just wanted to confirm. It seemed to me that this might allow for us to create, or update, rather, our ordinance to allow for designations that maybe don't need to confer as much protection, but instead can recognize something like Talbets, as was mentioned in public comment, perhaps like just as an example, rather than seeking to... Perhaps like just as an example, rather than seeking to protect the Talbets building itself, there could be some kind of provision for constructing maybe a plaque on the public right of way that speaks to how long Talbets was in service to our city, if it was, you know, seemed to be of local historical recognition. Does that sound like the sort of thing that might be allowed through a tiered designation?
You could achieve that through a tiered designation. You could also achieve that through something else that doesn't have to be a designation of a historic resource. The city can decide you want to have like a plaque recognition program. And then that could be something that's different than your local designation. So there is a lot of flexibility in how you identify what you want to call your historic resources or sites. I would just warrant that you would want to consider what that would mean in a CEQA lens. If you do have this tiered designation, you should make clear in the ordinance what you're going to be treating as a historical resource. Something we see, you know, as a practitioner in this, when we're doing CEQA reviews, that causes a lot of confusion when there is tiered designation because the city's like, well, is this a resource per the CEQA guidelines or not? So that's the only thing I would caution against with a tiered designation. It's definitely an available option, but you might want to consider maybe something else.
And I appreciate Councilmember Diaz Nash bringing up the Glendale's, City of Glendale's example with regard to how it obtains consent and how it goes through the application process. I was, you know, trying to get a sense of whether that seemed like something that might be a good fit versus something like what the City of Long Beach was, seems to do as shared in our report, which is more of a high bar to start with at the application process. And I was curious to get a sense from city staff on whether, I guess I had, my impression of the Glendale process by contrast was that it might be a lot of extra staff work. It might be kind of going back and forth. And, you know, with like first application, then a petition, and then like a second petition and so on. Would staff have any preferences or thoughts on, you know, which of those, if at the end we were asking for 50 or more percent property owners to agree to go ahead with something which might be a better fit?
Weighing, I don't know that we're going to see a huge number of historic district applications. And so I think really, it's more about setting the process that best serves the community and aligns with council direction. I think as a staff, we can support any of these options. And I think we'll then move forward to develop the best process we can. But I think given that we don't expect to see a huge number of historic district applications, we'll be able to support the process that ultimately council wants to see and is best supported by the community. Not that I gave you a clear answer, I don't know. But I think, I think we see these as infrequent enough. We want to support the best process for the community.
Okay.
So just through the mayor, want to just make sure we're looking at time with five minutes here up till seven o'clock. If we can get to the questions, answer them, that'd be great.
Oh, yes. Thank you. I have gotten to my questions. And so I'll just move on to city council direction. On number one, I would say yes. Number two, I would say, you know, I think I agree with Councilmember Diaz Nash, starting with CRHR seems efficient. And yet I think that the outreach process and, you know, what we're undergoing as a city will likely unearth and reveal other criteria that we may want to consider including. And just on that note, I think that might include additional criteria that might be more specific to the City of San Mateo, as I think Councilmember Fernandez mentioned, and rarer than what CRHR might provide, as I think I heard in public comment. And I think that makes, you know, I think that's important because personally, I wouldn't, I think the overall best application of such a process would be something that does in fact result in, you know, a few applications for the most historic resources in our city, rather than something that could potentially apply to a large amount of frankly, homes and neighborhoods in our city. For number three, I would say yes, but owner support should be required. My initial thoughts are something certainly at least 50%, or rather, a majority, so at least a majority. And I could be convinced that maybe something like two thirds actually sounds reasonable as well. It should be express consent. And I would say owner consent should apply to local designations and historic districts. Thank you.
I know we're at time, so I'm going to be as brief as possible. But I did just want to set the record straight, Zach. During public comment, a comment was made about the deficit. So just to confirm, this is coming from the Advanced Planning Fund, which has about $6 million in it today, 2.2 million of which is unencumbered for specific projects like this, correct?
That is correct.
Awesome. Thank you. So just want to reiterate as well that we allocated not 500,000, but 330,000 from the Advanced Planning Fund, which would have been allocated anyways through the general fund process, correct?
Yes, that was the appropriation, was approximately 330,000.
Great. And then I just want to say thank you for the presentation. So getting to the questions, number one, I'm a yes. However, I would not like this to sit with the planning commission. I actually like Nicole's idea of CRC and leveraging them. I thought that was a great idea, as well as Lisa Nash's comments about some type of advisory committee. But I understand, you know, with staff time and resources, I do think leveraging an existing commission like CRC could be really beneficial. In terms of number two, I agree, I would like us to leverage, you know, the CRHR policies. That being said, I do think San Mateo is unique. We are a very large city. We're trying to have our own process and we definitely want community engagement. My understanding actually was that we were going to have some type of community meeting and input about consent. So I'd love to have, you know, that kind of baked out the next time you come and make sure that we have received community input. For number three, I am a yes, as long as there's owner support required. I'm not going to weigh in on the threshold because again, going back to the January meeting, I actually think that's something the community should provide input on. And then for me, I do think affirmative consent is needed. So thank you very much and appreciate all your efforts here and the community coming out.
Sure. One more.
Sorry, Thud the Mayor, I just want to mention, because I realized I forgot to weigh in on the reviewing body part. And I do, for what it's worth, want to put one vote in for the planning commission because I think that would be most efficient, simplest, and frankly, very few Samitans know more about our homes and buildings, neighborhoods and land use than our planning commissioners. And that would be present and past.
Sorry, Thud the Mayor, I just want to make a point of clarification about why I agree with Nicole on CRC. The planning commission is in the process of reviewing over 20 applications for housing. And I think they're very, very busy. And there's more likely to come because we're only halfway to our arena numbers. And I really want them to focus on that. And I think we have a lot of other community members where we could, you know, leverage their expertise. So just wanted to follow up on that.
Okay. So we're four minutes over. Well, for kind of, I haven't gone yet. Okay, please, go ahead.
In the interest of trying to find some kind of compromise on the body, my concern with just having it be CRC is the fact that there is, while it's wide diversity of people in the community, there isn't any knowledge of historic resources. And I think that really is important. So if there was some way, and I would look to staff to say, of using existing body to augment it, I don't know. But if you just take good people who have different perspectives and say, you're not going to deal with this, it's a real challenge. So that's my concern, but I appreciate why it was offered.
Okay. All right. I have way too many notes to go through this. I'm going to ask like two or three questions and then I'm going to give my opinions. I was curious, one of the comments was a super majority, a four-fifth vote, I would be presumable for a super majority for the protest provisions. Would that super majority body ultimately be the city council? Or is that one of the things we still have to kind of suss out?
The intent with that would ultimately be the city council. And it just, the example there would set a higher bar if there was protest.
Okay. I think we've talked about this already, but our historic ordinance being so out of date definitely comes with some hindrance to the city's ability to function, inconsistency with state and federal requirements. And the money is not half a million, it's 330,000. And it's coming from a pot that would otherwise be used for this type of thing anyways. That's already been clarified, but just yes?
Yes.
There's been some concerns about the two active Mills Act contracts. I'm wondering, would it be possible if, as one of the conditions for them to continue to be Mills Act properties, that we require them to be historic or go through the historic process? Is that something that would be?
I think we would need to establish that as part of the ordinance. But if that's a requirement as part of the ordinance, then yeah, we would expect that for all properties that are subject to it, if that's where the policy lands.
Thank you.
As part of the Mills Act, you have to be a historic property is my understanding as well.
So we would, yeah, these two would be the first candidates.
They already are designated back in 19, in the early 90s. And so just on that point too, to the mayor, we are looking into those two properties. I know staff has sent letters and we'll be meeting with them to better understand the type of investments on the property as well. So just want to put that into the record.
Thank you. Okay, so let's just go straight to it. For number one, I think that we should proceed. I do like the idea of using the CRC. I do obviously have concerns about that as well because they weren't really geared for that initially. I do have concerns about putting any more work on the planning commission. I think what I would say is that I'm for having a reviewing body and I'd like to have more information brought back to us so we can decide what that really looks like. For number two, should we, local historic, I would agree with what everyone, I think everyone has pretty much said. I would start with the California RHAR requirements. I would then look to see if there's other things that are specific to us, and I would look for that to be brought back as well. Should historic ordinance mechanism designate historic districts locally? Yes, I support this and I would want owner support at that certain level. Again, I think when we come to, which was the next question, is the consent part, I would say that I would be for majority consent. Well, presumably I would say that if people are trying to make their own property, then there isn't the consent needed, right? It's their own property. I would say for historic, if the neighborhood was trying, that we'd want a majority consent. I think that's important. But I also don't think that we've done the outreach. So I'd want to know what that looks like. Is it 50% plus one? Is it a two thirds majority? So that's where I stand on that. And what am I leaving out? What's beginning of number four? Should owner consent be required? Yes, I feel it should be for, obviously, unique housing or one-off properties and the majority consent for a district. Am I me leaving anything out?
I think you've covered everything. Would you like me to wrap up kind of the direction that we've received this evening?
That would be great.
Okay, so for question number one, I've heard a majority of the council express that they would like to proceed. They'd like to see the CRC as a potential body and bring back more information on what that would be. So that's number one. Number two is the criteria. So we'd be moving forward with a CRHR requirements, but also look at the additional criteria specific and unique to the City of San Mateo. I heard a majority for that. Regarding the historic preservation ordinance, include a mechanism to designate historic districts locally, I heard a yes from the majority. Should owner support be required at what level? I heard at least 50% plus one, at least a simple majority. I heard up to two thirds, potentially 75%. So that's, I've heard at least minimum simple majority as a baseline, as a floor.
Part of what we, many of us said too, was that we don't feel like we can define that now because we haven't had the public outreach. So as part of the public outreach, we want to be able to come back and actually dial that in.
That's fine. But I also want to just take in that I've heard at least a simple majority potentially as a floor for consent. Because the council was very clear with me back in January that they want to consent. And I want to be able to articulate and educate and inform the community that this is one of the directors from the council. It's not just a open-ended, you know, item.
Yep.
That work? Okay. And then just what form owner consent, what I've heard is yes for owner consent and at least an affirmative position. I see nodding heads and that's kind of what I heard overall. So I think that is the recap and covers. I see nodding heads that we got that. And so we'll move forward with that direction. Anything else, Director Doll?
We've gotten what we needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for coming out and making public comment tonight. The regular meeting will be starting in five minutes. We're going to take a five-minute intermission.